Good evening, welcome to the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings. Today is Tuesday, February 27, 2018, the time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone from the Riverbank Ministerial Association? Not please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member Anne Jones Cruz, here. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell, here. Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey, here. Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez, here. Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien, here.
There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda items to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move to item 1.1, Crossroads West Project Update.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Our contract planner, John Anderson, is going to give this presentation tonight. And as he's setting up, I'll just share that his council is aware this project has been in the formation phase for a very long time. And we are now just coming to the part of the project where we have enough of an environmental document and specific plan that in short order will be out for public review. So we wanted to give an update on the process, what we've done so far, and then next steps.
Thanks, Sean. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Jamie Anderson, land use planning, contract planner with the city here tonight to go through a few steps and kind of a workshop session, if you will, on the work that we've been performing to date on the Crossroads West specific plan. I've prepared a PowerPoint for you. It'll be shown up on the screen. I'll go through a number of special topics and then at the very end, show you what steps are remaining. As you may or may not be aware, we've been working on this project, I think initially probably over five years ago until we got an advanced funding agreement. We have released what they call a notice of preparation for an EIR for this project. We're continuing to work on the specific plan, eighth version, ninth version. I've kind of lost track. But anyway, we're close, closer to getting the specific plan finished. And we'll kind of go through some of its elements tonight. So principally, a lot of the work lately has been focused on the EIR sections. It's our hope that that EIR will be released within the next 30 days or so. Still has to go through legal for review at the city level. And then we'll be able to present it to the public at some type of an open forum. So anyway, so here we go through this workshop. See how this works. Summary. So we've got past year elements of the specific plan itself. And then the draft, EIR, or Environmental Impact Report sections, and then the next steps. So past year, we've worked on various land use mixes. This is truly a mixed-use project, and that includes normal, single-family residential as well as medium-density residential, high-density residential, open space, commercial, parks, and mixed-use development. Past year, we've worked on, again, specific plan, orientation of uses, how each use would be oriented to one another, what kind of land use mix, and what type of buffers would be between those types of land uses. And of course, road circulation, other aspects, which I'll show in a minute. So we've got sections in the specific plan. They talk about architecture, design guidelines, and then, of course, the suggestions for a higher level of architectural theme throughout the entire project. And of course, whenever you build a project of this size, 390 acres, you need to be concerned about how infrastructure will be funded and financed, and how ultimately each property owner will have their obligation and share in these facilities. So it is definitely a work in progress. We're hope, I would say about 90% finished with it. We're hopeful we'll have some kind of a joint City Council Planning Commission workshop on the plan itself, either in March or the first part of April. So land use, kind of shows some pretty pictures. This kind of shows, it doesn't really show very well here. I'm not sure why. You can hardly even read the darn thing. But the green is parks. That's an expansion of the Regional Sports Complex north of Morel. The white, I'm not sure why it's showing up in white, would be the single-family residential. The purple is the mixed-use, primarily commercial, which would be a mirror of the Crossroads Commercial Center that we have to date. And then the brown would be some of the high-density development proposed. And then the yellow along the north-south collector would be kind of a park storm drain concept. Circulation. Circulation pattern is as such, you've got a project bounded on Oakdale Road and then, of course, along Claws. And then you've got these road cross-sections. These really did not turn out that well on screen, which is weird. Look at them on the diagram behind you, they're much clearer. Anyway, there is a suggestion on the north-south collector that we could have roundabouts. Roundabout it at Crawford Road and then again at Morel, both of which will have to be studied as part of a final traffic analysis. So elements, obviously water. We've got water circulation. There's a water network system that will be required to build. There's a water well that they will be required to build, to install. That'll be in the north of Morel, near the MID main canal. And there'll be a water peaking reservoir that will be required, a large tank in the southern portion of the property along the north-south New Collector Road adjacent to the MID lateral number six. So next is sewer. And again, sewer, infrastructure, network system, and then relying on what we have along Roselle. There's going to be a number of upgrades to the Roselle line, Roselle pump station, in order to accommodate the project. There is the suggestion for one public pump station. The rest would be private if necessary within the project area. So storm. It's a series of onsite storm water detention, retention and detention facilities. The linear park along the north-south collector would be kind of a combined park storm drain system. And then the expansion of the Regional Sports Complex north of Morel would be a combined park storm drain concept. Both of these systems would discharge into the MID laterals, either MID lateral, the main lateral in the north, or MID lateral six in the south, using our LID standards that we are enforcing here within the City of Riverbank. Parks and Recreation, I mentioned earlier. There's this linear park storm drain basin along the north-south collector, and then, of course, the expansion of the Regional Sports Complex. Architecture. Certainly, there's going to be a number of themes proposed within the project and then also expansion opportunities within the architecture presented because, quite frankly, there is new architecture that comes up. We're looking at a 20-year plan, and we have to be flexible enough to assume that there's going to be additional architecture added to the plan. The idea is that we have diversity of architecture, not one particular architectural style presented within the project. So the EIR, which is really what we've been focusing a lot of our attention on, includes a number of sections. Some of the more detailed sections would include, of course, traffic. There was an urban decay analysis performed. And then, of course, greenhouse gas and hydrology and water quality. So the next steps. So the next steps, we'll be releasing the administrative EIR. That's actually happening right now to us, to staff, to legal counsel. We'll be releasing the draft EIR to the public. And we're assuming that that could be released within 30 days or so. And then we'll finalize the specific plan. I would like to see that specific plan finalized also within the next 30 days or so. And then, obviously, schedule a public workshop for both Planning Commission and City Council and go over the detail of the project. There'll be a final EIR that will be published, and that will be, it will include comments that we received on the draft EIR, and then responses to those comments in a final document to be known as a final EIR for the Crossroads project. We'll have Planning Commission hearings, we'll have City Council hearings, and then we'll ultimately have an annexation application presented to Stanislaus-Lafco for the area that we're talking about. So after having said that and gone through this presentation, if there is any questions in the media about what's going on with the project, where we stand right now, I'm here to answer those questions.
When will we have the EIR, when will we have the EIR ready for release?
For public release in about 30 days.
So we won't see Lafco until November?
Well, I mean, if you, well, I mean, I haven't really looked at it that way, Mayor, so I'd have to put the timeline to it. November. I'm just thinking out loud now. If we went to public hearing in front of the commission, in Planning Commission, in May, City Council in June, we could get to Lafco maybe before November. But it might, actually, November might be a pretty good date. We'd probably get before there. But it all depends on how things come together. And we've spent a lot of work on this specific plan, and there's been a lot of holdups, you know, getting that document finalized. So my big concern is, we're releasing an environmental document. I want that environmental document to represent, you know, the final specific plan. I don't want to start releasing that and still futzing with the specific plan document. So it's all dependent on when that document would be ready and available.
Any questions, comments? Well, I'm glad we're at this point.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah. Yeah, it was exciting to see all the things coming together.
John, how long have you been working on this?
Well, that's a very good question. I should mention, five years. So it's been, you know, on and off. So probably the last three or four months, pretty hot and heavy. Last three or four months, pretty hot and heavy. The issue is, you get a plan, the specific plan, you comment on it, and then you wait. And sometimes we've waited, you know, several months before we got replies back, so. Okay? Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. At this time, a member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council, LRA Board. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ramon Bermudez, at Roselle, Riverbank, for about 23 years. I was kind of deciding to see this news in Modesto V on Friday, February 16, 2018. It's like a week ago. And it says about the petitions filed in Riverbank to halt OKD dispensaries. There's two of them. And I happened to be here in one of the Planning Commission meetings to where there was a substitute lawyer, attorney for the city. We got here a little bit after the half of the meeting was over. And made a comment somewhere marijuana is here to stay. And it was approved. And so many of us voted because of the medicinal purposes, not so much because of the recreational part of it. I say it hurts me to know that between five people that were in the Planning Commission, two, I guess, the last time, they were treated to. But yet, on what I've seen on TV and other parts of the City Council meetings and some people that were here, that you as City Council members and as a mayor are not paying attention to what we're saying. And it's noticeable because for the one that was approved first on Oakdale Road, used to be a tar shop, by the way. It used to work next to it when he was Chevron Station. You were not taking into consideration that there is a karate school like 400 feet, maybe 300 feet right behind that building. And if you're not taking into consideration that, then that's against you for not considering the children first on these matters. And also, here was a notification for the one here on Third Street. It's convenient that they have it close to the police station, huh? That's great. I understood for three or four merchants that I asked, I didn't want to bug anybody else. But so many of them are renting, leasing those buildings. But the newspaper says in the Riverbank News that you send notices from the City of Riverbank to the owners. If I'm an owner, I don't really care how long I use pay my money. But the merchant is going to care about what's going on in the neighborhood. So it's just one point on issue. And so you know that, again, it shows that you are not paying attention to what the community tells you. In that meeting of the Planning Commission, we were ten that spoke about it and talked against it, and we had our reasons. Yet there was one in favor that is going to be a grower. Legally a grower, of course, is going to be on favor of it. But of the regular people that are not involved in the business, we don't want it. And you were told here, it says neither dispensary has opened while owners make building improvements at both sites. The council has rejected a strident plea from many marijuana opponents at multiple meetings, which is true, there've been a few. And I have to go to my dictionary. I haven't used that word strident, but I saw it in writing here. Strident is strongly expressed. And a plea is an urgent emotional request, which many of the people that were here in those meetings brought you. So if you're not going to listen to the pleas, it's not one. But there's various, it's a few of them, and they're requesting for you. And it's trying that it was strongly opposed to that part, and you still don't care. It shows that you don't care what the people says. You don't care how many were against it. You just care about money, money, money. Be careful.
15 seconds.
All I hope, to God it doesn't come true because it's a majority of people who don't want it, and it's showing that you don't really care what the people say when we are the ones who put you on where you are. Thank you very much.
Further public comment, please.
Hi, I'm Ashley Edwards, and I am a local youth leader. And I was on staff for quite a while before, for the Pentecostals of Riverbank, before they gave me the youth group. I pretty much oversee the youth and young adults. And I can say that a lot of our youth come through our church quite often. I don't, we are very familiar with the community. That being said, being their youth leader, I know some of the things that they struggle with. I know some of the open doors and the things that they have started doing that open the door. I also realize that being a youth and young adults leader, I have youth hanging out with young adults. So I've got young adults who are over the age of 21, up to 32 unmarried. That means that they will be legal to buy the stuff at the dispensaries. And they can, being the friends of people that are younger, give it to them. Yes, we have parents. Yes, we have parents that police. But how often do you see in the community, and especially with our youth, that parents aren't always involved? There is a lot of parents that do not pay attention. I've got over 22 kids that are wanting to go with me to a huge convention. Half of the parents did not come to the parent meeting. I had three parents out of those 22 kids come to the parent meeting. I say this tonight to make you aware that not all parents are going to find the marijuana that the kids are hiding. Not all parents are going to be able to turn it into the dispensary to find out who bought it. Not all parents are going to be able to police their children in that way. And I ask you to open your eyes to the community and what the kids are seeing. And if they're seeing that we're okay with this, we're opening the doors. And we have these young adults going in and buying marijuana and passing it down to the younger generation, what doors is that opening for our younger generation? I have students in my group that started with marijuana and is dropping acid. I have students I have students that come to me constantly with the things that they struggle with, and they don't know how to stop. And they don't know how to stop because somebody allowed the door to be open for them. And I come to you asking you to open your eyes to that. I understand that the Bible says to obey the laws of the land. I understand that the Bible also says, do not turn away my children. Because if you turn away my children and you cause any of my children to fall, you will have to be in, in standing for their soul. And by saying that, I'm trying to get you to understand how serious this situation is. It may not be an issue for you, it may not be an issue for your kids. It may not even be an issue for your nieces or your nephews. I can tell you, my nephew is an excellent student, a three-point-five GPA. He is a baseball player, he's involved in church, he loves God, he loves his friends, and he is not somebody that smokes. He is not somebody that drinks. But I can tell you that there are students his age that are his friends that are going through things that is very similar to that. That they are on the complete opposite end of the spectrum. And I ask you to open your eyes to that, because we don't ever want to be the reason that anyone falls. We want to be the examples. I encourage you to see the issue before you. I encourage you to see what these kids are struggling with. I can tell you that they are facing things that I didn't face. I'm twenty-seven years old, I'm fairly young. And taking this position unmarried is very unheard of, especially in the United Pentecostal religion. And that being said, I feel like I'm seeing things a little bit more firsthand than an older youth pastor may see them. And that my youth pastor may have seen them, because I am right there in the middle of these kids. And there are things that you do, you are not even aware of that these students are facing. The peer pressure is off the hook. The, the social battering is just completely ridiculous. And kids are feeling pressured to, to go to truck meets, to go to parties, to go to their, their friends' kickbacks. And they're feeling pressured to do what their friends are doing. Yeah, it's as easy as a no, but some kids weren't brought up that way. And we have a, a poverty epidemic in our community. And unfortunately, ignorance comes with poverty, ignorance meaning that they don't understand certain things. They don't understand how to educate their children not to do the things that we would hope that they wouldn't, and not to partake in those things. That being said, you know, we kind of have to open our eyes to the way that our community really is built and the stuff that is, the aspects of it being put into the circle. And I ask you to open your eyes to that before this comes onto the agenda and before you ever vote on anything. I ask you to see that and see that these kids are struggling, and they're going to marijuana and alcohol for the open door. The a hundred percent, and it's, it's happening. I don't have one kid, except for maybe the ones that are a little bit older, that has not tried it. I, I can tell you that I am, I am one that's never tried it, and, and that's very unheard of for kids my age.
Okay, Tom, may I ask her a question? Where are they getting the marijuana right now? Through pushers, and it's contaminated with herbicides and pesticides? And it's dangerous out there with the drugs?
Right.
Okay, the, the, the pathway is out there to where it is very violent? And if your kids are doing it, then you're, they're in harm's way. Now, this, these marijuana dispensaries are trying to minimize the effects that pushers and dealers can have on the youth. But it's going to take a while to do so. The dispensary, it's legal, it's, it's, it's a legal business. You can grow it, everybody out there can grow it in their homes. Unfortunately, uh, six plants. The, the dispensaries, anybody can find out where it is, just bring it down to the police officer, they can find out who sold it. Now, they're getting it, they're not going to get, uh, a lot of it from the dispensary, they'll get some. But they're going to maintain, under twenty-one, they're going to maintain getting that marijuana from dealers. Okay, and they're out there, and they're dangerous. So what we're trying to do over the long run, we know the black market's not going to go away, but it's going to change the face of the black market, it's going to take time. Okay, and I understand where you're coming from, but look at the holistic, the whole picture, not just a little piece, please.
If I can offer a rebuttal, I do understand that a hundred percent, I can tell you that I do. I know that it takes time for things to get into the mix of things, um, and for things to become permanent. But regardless, like you said, that black market's not going to go away. And they may be able to be offered that small amount that may not be found by their parents. And I understand they can go to Modesto, they can go to Stockton, they have friends everywhere that can get it for him. I get that, but in our community, our small community, if we can stand against that, and if we can stand against accepting that, then maybe we can make a difference. And that's what I ask you to, 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 um, take into consideration.
My apologies, I left my remarks at home on my printer and had to have my twelve-year-old take a picture of them and send it to me. So whether I can see this or not, it's going to be questionable. Um, good evening, uh, mayor and, and council members. My name is Jennifer Miekoah, I'm a resident in, in, uh, Riverbank and Crossroads community. My reasons for attending this evening, um, was originally to get an update on the new Crossroads West development that will fall under my purview as a school board member for Sylvan Union School District. However, as you know, I have been one of many residents involved in an effort to collect sufficient signatures to either encourage the city council to repeal their decision to allow marijuana dispensaries in our town, or cause that a vote, uh, be made by the residents to decide, um, the fate of said dispensaries. We are more, we are more successful than even I imagined, having gathered more than eleven-hundred-and-fifty signatures against the recreational dispensary on Patterson Road and close to the same amount for the medicinal slash recreational dispensary slated to go in just down the street. In the process of gathering signatures, one of our residents wrote a letter to our congressional representative Jeff Denham and requested that we read a portion of that to you this evening as he was unable to be here. And I have a copy that I'll, I'll give for each of you, that, I'm just quoting from one paragraph. Congressman Denham says, "I believe legalizing drugs, including marijuana, is a detriment to society and will endanger future generations. There is consistent empirical evidence that shows drug legalization does not curb demand problems. In fact, drug abuse rates tend to increase when drugs are legalized. Furthermore, evidence shows that crime rates dramatically increase when drugs are legalized. Finally, legalizing marijuana sends the signal to people that marijuana use is okay, as it establishes the condition for its increased general use. For these reasons, along with the concerns over public health and public safety, I do not support the legalization of marijuana and will work with law enforcement in the Central Valley to curb illegal drug activity of every kind." And like I said, I'll give you a copy of the rest of that letter. Um, I'd also like to submit to my city council representative, Ms. Barbara Martinez, a copy of an article, uh, just one article that I found from a newspaper in Las Vegas. Las Vegas reflecting on what Colorado has learned over the several years since marijuana was made legal in that state. I will only hit the highlights, um, as they touch on some of the reasons that were given by the vote made by our own city council. I invite you to read the rest of the article in its entirety to get more of the detailed concerns and some of the hard data. The bullet points are, rather than eliminate the black market, legalization of marijuana has helped it flourish, police say. Number two, citations for driving under the influence of pot have made up a bigger proportion of DUIs every year since legalization, even though a total, as total DUI numbers have dropped. Number three, edible marijuana products were rarely talked about during the Colorado campaign, but they quickly became a headache for lawmakers and hospitals alike. Number four, um, while Colorado's tourism industry continues to boom, some are, are linking legal weed to an increase in the homeless population in Denver. And number five, some residents of one Colorado community have had enough and have forced a vote on whether to shut down the recreational pot stores in their city, which is similar to what the effort that, that we have tried to make in our town to repeal the decisions that have been made in the last month and a half. Uh, in conclusion, in both the collection of, of the signature process, as well as the research I have done on this issue over the last few weeks, I would like to encourage our elected representatives to get out and learn the voice and the will of the people they serve. In researching how Prop forty, I'm sorry, Prop sixty-four played out amongst Riverbank voters, I learned that, that if this law were applied on a city-by-city basis instead of as a state law in the similar way that states are now determining, um, states are now choosing to exempt themselves from the federal law banning marijuana, the marijuana would not, then marijuana would not be legal in Riverbank. By a narrow vote of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight to three thousand six hundred and nine, a margin of one hundred and forty-nine votes, the residents of Riverbank voted against legalization, and yet the city council that represents us voted five to zero in favor. In the few short weeks we were allowed to, to canvass neighborhoods, we were able to gather more than ten percent of registered voter signatures needed to bring this vote to the people. In reality, that shouldn't have been our responsibility. For an issue as important as this one, our voice should have been solicited much earlier in the process through town hall meetings, newsletters, or other forms of collaborative feedback. As we wait for the outcome of the two referendums, I would ask you to do just that. Mr. Campbell, you said that to show you the significant voice of dissent in the community, and then you would listen. I believe that we have provided that burden of proof, and it is my sincere hope that, that we can have some meaningful community dialogue on what to do next. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment. We move on to the consent calendar, consisting of item three A, wave readings. Item three B, approval of February thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Are there any comments, or do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
Just for the record, um, council authority member Fossey will abstain from voting on three B in the minutes. She was absent at the last meeting. Council authority members, Fossey. Oh, zoom. No, you can go ahead and vote, yes. Council authority member Campbell.
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Public hearing, item five point one, a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, mid-year budget amendment.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, our assistant city manager, Marisol Garcia, will be giving this report this evening, which will update you on the latest, um, with regard to our revenues and expenditures and, and take us through the end of this fiscal year, hopefully.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. So tonight, we do have for you the mid-year budget review, along with a few amendments that we'd like to make to this fiscal year's budget. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we were looking at a structural deficit of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And what that signifies is the fact that our revenues were falling short for the expenditures that we were projecting. Uh, we were looking at ending the fiscal year with an eight-point-three percent reserve, and the city council has established a minimum ten percent reserve. The mid-year budget review provides us an opportunity to review our projections from the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, the city council adopted a preliminary budget back in June of two thousand seventeen. We had anticipated presenting to you a final budget after labor negoti, uh, negotiations had been concluded. Because those concluded so late into the fiscal year, we felt that it was just prudent to come forward during mid-year and make those amendments. So as of mid-year, prior to any adjustments being requested, we were at thirty-three percent of, uh, revenues received. Uh, some of our revenues have timing issues with, particularly, um, when we come to property tax. Uh, those are generally received twice a year, um, usually in December, but a lot of times they come in January, and several of our property taxes did come in January this year. And then we'll receive a second allocation in, uh, May. So although it looks like we are well below, um, our anticipated budget, we do anticipate that we will be reaching and exceeding the budget that was originally presented to you. Uh, in terms of expenditures, we're also at the thirty-three percent level. A lot of our expenses in terms of any capital improvements, uh, come later in the fiscal year. We do have also had some salary savings for positions that were open, um, vacant and have not yet been filled, and so a lot of those will be filled, um, during this second half of the year. And so in terms of revenue adjustments that we're proposing, some of the major ones within the general fund is an amendment to our sales tax. Uh, we've had some positive increases in our sales tax over the past couple of months. Um, and over the past couple of years, we've basically established a new base where, um, we've noticed that the minimum that we've received has been three million a year, and so that'll be, um, projected forward based on information that we receive from our sales tax audit, as well as, um, information that we have in-house in terms of any new development that may be occurring. Uh, property tax in lieu of V L F, that's a property tax that we receive, which compensates us for the lack of, uh, vehicle license fee revenues that we receive from the state. Uh, that's based on property values, and as our property values has been, have been increasing, then this property tax increases as well. Um, and then we do have the legal settlement that's been renegotiated, uh, renegotiated for the Tuolumne County Quarry project. Um, we were supposed to start receiving revenue several fiscal years ago, but have, um, yet to receive them this year. We will be receiving from them ninety-five thousand dollars, and these are, um, directly appropriated for, um, railroad and safety improvements. Uh, in terms of major general fund expenditures that we're recommending, we have some assistance that we required in finance because we had some staffing shortages, and so we did have to seek, um, outside consultants, uh, to assist us with some of the items that we needed to prepare for our annual audit. For planning, we have an upgrade to, um, the immunity permit system. This is the system that they use to issue all of their building permits to track service requests. It will also now allow them to track cannabis permits that we will be issuing in the future. Um, and hopefully this will lead us into the future and ultimately be able to offer online permitting. Uh, for police services, you'll see a reduction of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. When we received initial projections from the county regarding, um, this year's, uh, contract, they were still negotiating their labor contracts with their deputy sheriffs. Uh, once they finalized those negotiations, um, the projections they had made were slightly too high, and so we were able to take advantage of some cost savings on our end. Um, in addition, for parks, we are recommending, um, the project that will install a tech line in our downtown medians. I'm sure you've seen for quite some time since the drought, um, was, uh, was enacted through the state that we had to remove the turf that was there, and we were not able to water. Now with the installation of the tech line, we'll be able to install some drought tolerant planning and be able to, to maintain that and, um, beautify our downtown once again. So overall, um, in terms of revenue increases for our general fund, we're looking at an increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, expenses will be increasing at, um, fifty-one thousand four hundred. And so the net increase to our reserve, that required ten percent reserve that the city council has established, is two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And so as of the end of the fiscal year, our new projection is that we will be at a, um, reserve level of seventeen percent, almost eighteen percent. But the figure that we want to focus on is that structural deficit. So that one hundred and eight thousand dollars is still telling us that our revenues are not sufficient to cover our ongoing expenses. Uh, just the highlight of a few other funds, um, where we are making adjustments, our sewer fund, um, we're asking for some capital improvement funds in order to replace a monitoring well, um, at the wastewater treatment plant, um, as well as some levy improvements to one of the ponds, and making some improvements to the access to the road. Um, those two particular projects, the levy improvements and the road access, were, um, listed as capital improvement projects as part of the rate study that was adopted by the city council several years ago.
On the road improvement to the wastewater treatment plant, can that be measure L money?
I don't believe so, because it doesn't.
But so are the pedestrian paths, paths at Jacob Myers Park.
Yeah, but I think the other problem is, is it's not really a public road so much, is it just a private road for our use to get there? But it's worth looking into.
Please, eleven thousand is eleven thousand.
Our water fund is also, um, contributing some funds due to the increase in the banking fees. So we've had a lot more residents take advantage of our online services, and so the, that translates to fees that the city pays on their behalf. I know there's a few other agencies around the region that, um, charge a convenience fee to their residents for that. Um, we currently do not. If you council would ever desire that we look at that, then that's something that we can bring forward at a later time. And one of the larger projects that you'll, you'll see, and normally we don't have projects this big during a mid-year budget adjustments, we normally will leave those to the preparation of the annual budget. of the annual budget, is this Phase One of the MID utility undergrounding project. It's a project that's been slated to happen since the inception of the original crossroads. Each of the crossroads developers paid a specific fee in order to underground those utilities. We finally have been able to work with MID in order to get that engineering done, and it is slated for construction during this fiscal year. So that would be Phase One, which is along Morel Road. So as we prepare for the future, this is where that structural deficit comes into play because it will get larger, unfortunately. We do have staffing vacancies that, in the sheriff's department, in building and planning, that at some point in time, as the city continues to grow and as we look at annexing more property, that we will have to think about in terms of how will the city be able to continue to provide services to our residents. New contracts for both labor groups, both labor groups have, one of our groups is currently out of contract, but we did impose some terms on them, and so we will be reopening that contract and negotiating with them. The second group, we did have a one-year contract with them, so hopefully we will look to negotiate a multi-year contract with them this current fiscal year. And then increasing costs in personnel with regards to our CalPERS unfunded liability, which is anticipated to increase by almost fifty percent within the next two years. And that's sort of Phase One. CalPERS has been making some other significant changes to the way that they allocate costs to all of the cities, and that's going to impact our rates as well in the upcoming fiscal years. So we definitely need to keep a mindful eye on that in order to plan for those costs. We'll have decreasing general fund reserve levels. So... Correct. In two years, we will be close to half a million a year in the unfunded liability. Here as well. Decreasing general fund reserve levels, as we continue to use our reserve in order to fund that gap between our revenues and expenses, that reserve level will continue to drop. We do have continued interest for new development, and the presentation that you received earlier will certainly help the city in the future, once construction starts, but at this point in time, we still have that that gap that we will need to fill. And in the future, we'll need to consider general fund subsidies for maintenance of effort in order to be able to receive revenues such as SB one funds and measure L. And so tonight, we do have for you the mid-year budget review and the proposed amendments, and I'm available for any questions.
Yeah?
No, my questions were answered by Sean in our meeting on Monday. So, thank you. Again, it was a lot of information, and I appreciate all the work.
Okay, just for the, just for you and for the staff and for the council, I did mention about the tax sharing between the city and the county. I might as well bring it up now. I'm going to go into negotiations with the county, and my intent is to reduce the burden on the cities without overtaxing the county. For those of you who don't know, we have a tax sharing agreement for every piece of property in the county, there's a baseline. What's the tax revenue that the county gets for, let's say, the farm that we're going to convert? That's the tax, that's the baseline. If we annex any property, that baseline stays with the county. Okay? The county needs to provide countywide services. So when you improve that property, let's say you improve it, let's say the baseline is one hundred dollars, and you improve it where you're going to have two thousand dollars increase above the baseline, that is split eighty percent of the way with schools and special districts, mosquito districts, et cetera. The remaining twenty percent goes thirteen point six percent to the county, and six point six percent. So if you pay twenty-one hundred dollars in taxes, the city will get one hundred and thirty-two dollars to provide for police services, municipal services, parks, recreation, improvement of your roads, fixing of your roads, and some of the other municipal services that we provide. So that was made about twenty-five years ago, and the county sent it out to the cities thinking, okay, we're now going to have a negotiation, and every city approved it. So I'm going back to see if we can get a little bit more fairer representation for the city. So that may help us a little bit, but I wouldn't hold my breath. The alternative is, we could say we're not going to pay any taxes, and they would not have to approve any annexation, so we're not going to do that. Okay. That was just a little ad lib. Do I have a...
Add one, I just have something really quick. I did, one of my questions, and as though I stated it was answered, it might be good to just kind of bring it up here, just so the public can get that information also. My question to Sean earlier in the week was, in looking at some of this, the twenty-nine percent reserve in the sewer fund, I was like, wow, that's such a large percentage. And Sean, do you mind just kind of sharing with them what you shared with me, why they carry such a reserve? Because it was something that didn't, it just seemed like a really huge reserve, and there was a really good reason behind it. So I just thought it might be important to have that information to you.
Sure, so there's a couple, there's a couple reasons. One is that, and Marisol, you can jump in here too, but one is that we have bonding levels, so when you build a sewer plant, it costs more money than we could afford, any city can afford, and so what you do is you bond against it, and those bonds have rules in them that basically say you need to maintain X percentage of reserve at all times, and it's a way for the investors to make sure that if something really bad happened in Riverbank and people started moving away, that there would still be some of that money that they could be repaid if they had to collect. So that's a legal requirement. The other reason is that when you do projects at the sewer plant, they're much more expensive than virtually anywhere else. And Michael can kind of attest that, you know, that just even lab work, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars a year. So we, you want to see a very healthy reserve in sewer at all times because of the likelihood of something going wrong, excuse me, the expense of something going wrong is so high that you want to make sure you have that savings, just in case you need it.
And it's not only for planned projects, but also for those unplanned emergencies that we have. Those are, when you need to mobilize somebody here quick, it does cost, and so we want to make sure that we're ready to respond to that at a moment's notice.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to accept the mid-year budget and...
It is to be a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is. This is a public hearing, I'll open it up for public.
Good evening again, my name is Ramon Bermudez. Ladies and gentlemen, I had very much interest of this public hearing that you have, the resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen mid-year budget amendments. And it's the second time I hear in a meeting that what you're including on your expenses is of the betterment of roads and the transportation. And I want to try to get the proper person to ask for what happened to proposition, not the proposition, but the measure L. I hope it didn't go to L. And the thing is, if, I was asking last year, it was too early, by April or March, I think it was, to find out what is all of this money, who are the representatives that are going to keep in line with the cost of the money that even is going to be coming in, well, it's been coming in, I should say, and they didn't consider the, I'll think, I'll think of four or five gas stations that they had the tax money from, the gas also has to come here because the state of California stopped already on taking that money away, from what I understand, for three years. And then if all of this is going, one of the reasons why they gave the dispensaries and approving them is because of the money that is going to be there for road. Wait, wait a minute. We had that measure L precisely for that and for transportation. I saw some public buses coming by the Chaping Center on Clarabelle and Ogde Road, and that's new. That might seem as a small improvement about transportation, and the elderly should not be forgotten of having the proper transportation. The veterans, I'm not going to have to say too much because we're trying to keep it balanced, not to go so strong so people don't start hating us. And if all of this money and all of these people that are supposed to be involved will be making a list of how much has been up to now, how much has been spent from there, where is the committee, I would call it, that they were going to put to see that that doesn't get, that money doesn't get spent on something else but what it was intended for, and those people names. So around the community of each city, it should be known who they are and how we can communicate with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'll respond to your comments after public hearing. Any further public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Pete Demattis. I'm here with Lyndon Yates, owner of Kiwi's Custom Guns, and right on Santa Fe Street.
This is for, for item five point one, sir.
The, for the budget?
Yeah.
Well, right, we just thought that we'd come check out the meeting and see how things are. We're acclimated to the city and maybe some, one of our concerns...
I know you have a concern, and we want to talk about that concern.
I don't need to talk about that specific concern, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that we appreciate the city's interest in promoting businesses downtown, and if there's ways we can help advertise that and promote that, we'd be all looking forward to it, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, I'll bring that back to the city council. Mr. Bermudez, there is an oversight committee for measure L, and the city's representative is Mr. Kerry Pope. He is available for comments. They meet on a quarterly basis, and measure L's money is strictly accounted for. Right now, we've received five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents, and we get it on a quarterly basis, and it's only been instituted for three quarters. So we should be getting more money along the way. There was, I misunderstood you or did not understand, but nothing on the cannabis is being used for roads. I didn't, did I misunderstand what you were saying? If there's a developer's agreement for fixing roads in front of the area, that's where they would have to put their development money. It's not a general, it's going to be used for safety. There's a safety fund set aside for police, school liaisons, and community youth activities to steer them away from any type of drug influence. Okay, all right, I'll bring it back to the city council for recommendation and/or discussion.
I make a recommendation that we accept the report.
And the mid-year, right. And expenses, okay.
And I second.
We have a motion to approve item five point one and a second.
Council members Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point one, a resolution approving the appointments of Mallory Fenrich and Steve Link to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning commissioners Ed Tobacco and Larry King have both recently resigned from the planning commission after providing service to us and doing a really good job, so we're actually very sad to see them go. But with that said, it provides new opportunities for new residents to get involved, and the mayor has interviewed a number of applicants over the last couple of months for the various vacancies we have on the board, and has brought forward to council the potential appointment of a Mallory Fenrich, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and Steve Link. Mallory will be a primary member, and Steve Link will be an alternate. And we've found that the alternate position that council created has actually worked out really well because we've had a lot of turnover, so it's allowed people to kind of move up. So with council's concurrence, these two members will be appointed, and the mayor can swear them in this evening if he likes.
Just a comment, I read over their applications, and I was very impressed with the qualifications of both candidates, and I welcome them aboard.
I can't see if Mallory here. You are, there you are. Back. So we have both candidates here. All right.
My only question and, or rather, comment was, I just wanted to make sure that our planning commission familiarizes themselves with our strategic plan, so that they know kind of what the, where we're moving forward and where we're going with that, and I just, I know I haven't seen any of the planning commissioners at any of our strategic planning events, but I wanted to kind of throw that out there. I thought that that would, might, you know, be something that would be important for them to familiarize themselves with or attend if they need to.
The intent is to have both the city council and the planning commission be educated in our general plan, and will also address the strategic planning and the process to the planning commission. And all the planning commissioners will be available to go to school or training in April, April...
It's in April.
It's in April. April fourth. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And it's all paid for by the city. It's to get you used to land use and, you know, what your responsibilities are. Don't confuse land use with policies. You may disagree with the policy, but it's the land use where you have to fully understand and make decisions along those ways. But with that, do I have a motion, oh, any public comment on this?
Ed Tobacco and Larry King, they both have resigned their positions. Both, both, both positions, alternate and primary.
I bring it back to the council.
I make a motion that we accept agenda item number six point one.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item six one.
Council members Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I know it by heart. I've administered this about a thousand times while I was in the meeting. If you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the constitution of the United States-
To the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of California-
And the constitution of the state of California.
That I take-
That I take.
This obligation freely-
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations-
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will-
And I will.
Well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty-
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mallory, here's your commission.
Thank you.
And here's your commission.
I need to sign them.
They're signed.
Mallory, you didn't say anything.
Oh, you didn't sign yours? Oh, there you go. You have to sign yours. Do you have a photo op? Oh, good, thank you. All right. And do you want to say anything? By the way, she is assistant planner for the city of Manteca. We may be stealing her, but that's okay. That's another, anyway. Do you want to say anything? Any of you want to say anything?
Uh, no, I'm happy to be here. I'm excited.
I am, Ms. West.
They're excited. All right, just take the picture and we'll move on. All right. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you. Am I done?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations again. Okay, moving on. Item 6.2, with glasses. A resolution for the approval of the, of an appointment agreement, employment agreement between the city of Riverbank and Michael Riedel as Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, the organizational structure of the city of Riverbank included the position of Development Services Director, which at the time was responsible for Public Works, planning, building, development services, and any other associated services that, that fell under that umbrella. Based on staff review, it appears that Public Works and Community Development were combined primarily at the time as a budget-saving measure and not necessarily as a way to streamline operations. The Development Services Director position has remained unfilled for many years, and after a review of current operational needs, it's the, it's the opinion of the city administration that a reorganization is needed. We view this as essentially the first step of reorganization to a slightly more traditional model than had, you know, previously been worked. We kind of see Public Works operating much more as sort of the operations center for public infrastructure, and planning, building, development services much more as the forward planning, compliance, and a couple other associated responsibility department. And we think that although the departments, you know, we all, every department in the city has to work together in some form or fashion, we think that this sort of provides a more clear and concise top-down structure for, for the organization. I see it, the Assistant City Manager and I have been talking a lot about this, and we see this as sort of the first step and probably a multi-step reorganization to kind of more clearly delineate lines of authority between departments, provide very specific guidance. As for Michael, it is my opinion that he's, he's earned this promotion. He has demonstrated an aptitude and enhanced scope of duties during my time here. One of the things I'm going to ask him to do during this three-year period of his, of his employment agreement is to help redefine what the expectations of the Public Works Director position are here at the city of Riverbank, and hopefully help us transition to the next person who will hold that position for the foreseeable future. Just in case people don't know, Michael's been with the city since December of 2011. Prior to that, he was employed by the city of Series for 27 years, both as a supervisor and Public Works Superintendent. He has over 34 years of experience in the public sector, held a number of technical licenses, water, water distribution, wastewater and collections. The council has given direction to myself and the city attorney with regard to this employment agreement. The city attorney has drafted the attached agreement, which includes specific negotiated components which were directed by the council. It's fairly standard. Most, most components are fairly standard to what you see in a lot of other, or other employment agreements. One of the slightly different components was that there's a provision that it requires the employee to provide a three-month notice to the city in the event that they decide to retire. We included that in there because Michael's been pretty upfront with, with me and the council that he, this is probably the one employment agreement for him before he hits the road in, in retirement. And so we wanted to make sure that we had enough time to be able to have overlap, do a recruitment and have overlap for his position. The financial impact, since we already employ Mr. Riedel and will not at this time at least be filling the Public Works Superintendent position, though we're going to evaluate that at fiscal year, it will, it essentially amounts to about a thirteen thousand, five hundred dollar difference between what we have now and, and what the total compensation package will be for him under the employment agreement. It, it also mirrors health benefits that are provided to the union labor group. So with that said, this represents the direction that the council has given, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
No questions.
No, I would just like to comment that I have worked closely with him, understanding the city over my first year, and he is very knowledgeable, and we're lucky to have him. I'm glad we've given him a little promotion. Hope we can keep him more than three years.
I would, I wonder what his wife is thinking on that.
I just wanted to thank you for your hard work and appreciate having you here at the city.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item 6.2? Come on up.
Okay, my name is Ramon Berbides from Roselle Avenue in Riverbank, and I'm so happy that he's getting that name, you know, director now. I had a few talks with him about different matters in the past, and, and, you say that he's very knowledgeable about it, and there is no question about it. And I hope together that he stays until he takes 30 years or so from now, because we need him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, you, yes, you're allowed to speak on this. Not to vote, though.
I'd be, I'd caution you, Michael, to be careful with your words here.
Thanks, Sean. I'll, I'll make sure I don't do this. Mayor, City Council, I, I would like to thank you and appreciate the ability to work here. I have been doing this for a long time. I have not worked for a lot of cities. I have dealt with a lot of cities and their other workers. I, I can truly say that working for the city of Riverbank is more like family than it is anything. I think, I really appreciate the fact that I am able to go out in the twilight of my career, and I use that word heavily, at, at the top position that I had already aspired to, to get to. So thanks to Sean and you. I really appreciate the opportunity.
I think he's assuming we're gonna vote for this. Any other further comments? Saying that, I'm bringing it back to the City Council for recommendation.
I make a motion that we accept item 6.1 as stated.
Two.
Six point two. I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 6.2 and a second.
Councilmembers Fosse-
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Moving on to item seven, staff comment, comments.
Thank you, Mayor. One specific comment tonight. I know I sent council an email on this, but I want the community to know this too because it's just a really, it's a really good example of good work. It's, a lot of people do a lot of good work here every day, and this is just one example. But, so, our Assistant City Manager, Maricela Garcia, who also does a lot of the finance duties, one of the big struggles with SB1 has been that there is a component of the law that requires the general fund to continue to spend what it did during, I think, the years '09 through '12. So if you were spending a lot of money out of your general fund on roads, the law says you can't access the new money that has passed under that law unless you spend the same amount of money you did from '09 to '12. The problem with that is that we had a couple of years here where the city was, the city's sewer fund was in, in the red, and so the general fund had stepped in to pay for some of the salaries of some of our sewer collection staff. And so it appeared to the state that we had spent a heck of a lot more money than we had in reality on, on streets and roads. And so Maricela took the city through an appeals process with the Department of Finance, which I can tell you, having gone through it myself a number of times, is very difficult. You almost never win. And we found out that after being denied initially and then appealing that decision, that it was approved by the Department of Finance, they reduced our required amount by how much, Maricela? About sixty thousand a year. So it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but let me just put it into perspective. If, if we couldn't, you saw the presentation earlier about our structural deficit. So the city's general fund really can't afford even just sixty thousand of dollars a year to go towards, further to go towards roads. So that deduction will get us within range to where we can reasonably allocate enough money out of the general fund to tap into SB1. And what, I was calculating the other day, I think what it means is about four million dollars additional over the next 10 years that go into basically maintenance and road projects. So it, it gives a lot more flexibility to projects that we badly need to do, and it's representative of really good work. So I just wanted to mention it and thank her and thank Kathleen. You know, I know helped a lot with that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse? Councilmember Campbell?
Just like to remind everyone that the Riverbank schools, the elementary schools, will be holding their annual volunteers for reading to students during the week of the 19th of March to the 24th of March. If you're interested in reading to any of their classes, call the three different school offices. You can find their phone numbers on the, on the websites. And volunteer, it's really a lot of fun to read to the kids.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Um, just one, a couple things. Moikoi, the Man of the Year, Citizen of the Year Dinner is March 11th at 6:00-
PM.
PM, 6:10. I'm sorry, the 10th.
Saturday, the 10th at 6:00 PM.
Saturday, the 10th, 6:00. So I was talking to Norma, and quite a few folks have not bought their tickets yet. So if you're planning on attending, please get your ticket now so they know how many to plan on. And I just had one, one more comment with regards to our public comment at the beginning of the meeting. I keep hearing over and over again arguments against legalizing marijuana and the, and the horrible effects that that has on society. And I agree 100% with that. And once again, I have to say up here that we are not here to discuss and talk about legalizing marijuana. That has been done, and I really wish that we would have had all this kind of activity and this public input when that proposition was even being voted on. We wouldn't have been in the situation and the place we are right now, I think, if some of these folks would have taken that kind of initiative before it was even voted by the entire state of California. With that said, once again, we are not up here discussing and talking about legalizing marijuana. The point that is being shared is that marijuana is legalized, and how are we as a city gonna deal with it? What kind of regulations do we want to put on that kind of business? I think that's, that's something I'm not hearing. Anybody that gets up there and speaks at that podium is talking about how are we gonna regulate it? It's here. We did, it is legalized already, and how are we gonna maintain it? How are we gonna deal with it in our city? And I would really like to hear some of that one of these nights, that, yes, this is, we feel that we need to have some regulations, because they, even the letter from, from Denim, it says, "Thank you for contacting me regarding the legalization of marijuana. This should have been done when it was first put on the ballot to vote to legalize it or not. That ship has sailed." And I just, it, it really got me fired up tonight that we are not up here discussing legalization and the harmful effects of marijuana. I think everyone can agree upon that. It's my time to talk, so I'm gonna take my five minutes. This isn't a discussion. But once again, we are not up here legalizing marijuana. We are up here trying to make a realistic plan of how are we gonna regulate it in our city. And I don't think any one of us, I'm speaking for myself, but don't agree with some of the things that they're being said and, and the harmful effects of it. I don't think any of us would, would disagree with that. But that's not what's going on here. How are we gonna regulate it and deal with it now that it is legalized in our town? Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I wanted to mention the railroad crossing at Patterson and First Streets by the BNSF Railroad, that I'm sure all of you, if you go over it, it is much smoother now. So we want to say thank you to them for that.
And safer.
And safer. And then also, March is Women's History Month, which is also corresponding with the International Women's Day on March the 8th. So I'd like to say thank you to all women of every facet of life for their love, their leadership, and for being pioneers for all of us. And congratulations to our new Planning Commissioners and also to Michael. I like the fact that you always give us, you look forward to what may be coming down the pipeline for our city and letting us know right away what kind of new regs are coming down and what you may think is gonna happen. So we appreciate your forward thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Although I'm sound sometimes a little abrupt, that's the way I was brought up in the Navy, and I don't really have a nice social side yet. But I do appreciate the input that we get. I wish some of it was here when we were doing the workshops, when we were doing the study sessions, and we had public hearings. When it went to the Planning Commission, they were supposed to discuss the land use portion of it, not whether or not they agreed with our decision. But that's something that all the Planning Commissioners will get to understand over the next couple of months. I'm giving a shout out to Norma Torres. I mispronounced her name big time at the State of the City. She did a fabulous job, and it was very easy for me to, to make that delivery based on all your hard work. Thank you, Norma. I truly like to commend the movement on the Crossroads West with the specific plan and the EIR. Everywhere else in the city is safe. Any, any new development from now on, we'll be paying, you know, I, I gave you the, the spiel of a hundred and thirty-two dollars for the property tax. All new development will be paying an additional six hundred dollars per year to provide for security, safety, things that everyone should be paying, but we don't. So the new ones will be paying their fair share for a police officer, for streets and roads. And although it may not seem completely fair, that's the way we designed it. Any new development will have that, and if you're redeveloping your own property, you'll fall under that CFD. So I know people have asked me this last week, well, how could you go forward if you don't have enough money? Well, they're gonna be providing their fair share, or they're paying their way above and beyond what everyone else is paying. And again, we saw that we have that shortage, that we have seven police officers short. We have a, a community development officer short. We have a lot of other personnel issues that we're shorthanded, but we can't afford it while we're paying off the state's CalPERS requirement. They made bad investments, which cost us money, and now we have to pay into the retirement system. And that's why when we talk about CalPERS issues, where it's now gonna be close to half a million dollars, that's because of poor investments on those who protect the retirees' money. And I want to congratulate- And I want to congratulate again the commissioners and good luck, and I hope the training goes well in Monterey. At that, we now proceed to closed session. Item eight point one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code five four nine five six point nine, three potential cases. Anyone for the public can comment on the closed session, but you have approximately five minutes to do so. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you and have a good evening. Seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you, and have a good evening.
...